Hi, welcome to the Canyon City Planning Commission Tuesday, November 22, 2017, Thanksgiving edition. I now call this meeting to order. Would you please all join me and rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Bernath, will you call roll?
Yes, Chairman Maloney. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Dorito?
Here.
Commissioner Harmon?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue?
Here.
Councilman Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Hammack are excused this evening. We do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd now ask for approval of the minutes from the October 28, 2017 regular meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Commissioner Harmon, Commissioner Dorito. Terry, call roll, please.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Next item is a public hearing. Zone change for 230 Yale Place from R1 to R2. I now open the public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the city in Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we have a staff report, please? Oh, well, hi, Ms. Arona.
Hi.
Would you like to speak first?
I don't know that I can add anything, but I would like to say one, I do have a statement to make. Obviously...
Can you, before you start, can you say who your name and you're representing?
Florina Arona, and I'm the property manager for Mr. Kenny's property at 230 Yale.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's been alluded that Mr. Kenny established this. He did not, when he bought this property, it was listed as having this apartment on it. It had a house number, and it had a mailbox with that same house number. He had at one time lived in that for a short time before he moved to Hawaii. But anyway, he didn't establish this, but in '11, when he, when I took over it, I had somebody in there, not right away, but I had a young lady in there, a medical student, for a month or so. Then there was a vacancy, and then I had one of the raft guides in for the season, who was a local one, not just any raft guide. And then, the people that was renting the front wanted to keep that as, wanted to pay more so they could keep that, so there wouldn't be anybody there. So there was nobody in there for about three years, until this young lady that's in there now. And about the same time she moved in is when this all started. And I just would like to say that Mr. Kenny has paid the $2,650 to the Fremont sanitation that he was either going to have to pay her before November, or ensue more penalties and fees. So he did pay it under protest, just to wait until this was over, and he'll leave it there if he gets it, and if he don't, they're supposed to see about getting back to him.
Okay. We might get the staff report, and then I might ask you to come back up, and if any of the commissioners have questions for you. That's okay.
Okay. Mr. Kenny was denied an ADU in July. And the reason for that is that he did not have residency as required in the R1 district for an ADU. An ADU is allowed in the R1 and RL district with an occupancy of the property owner at least six months out of the year. I wanted to let you know that before we start this. It was suggested to him at the council hearing that he could conceivably come back and get a zone change to R2 where those occupancy requirements are not required. So you could have two rentals on that, on your property. Ms. Arona did that for him, brought that application back in, and then we're also considering, again, the ADU application after this zone change. The main difference between the two districts, besides having that occupancy requirement for an ADU, is that in R1, it's generally, it is single-family home, and in R2, you can have a single-family home or a duplex. That's the primary difference. We were concerned, and I know Ms. Arona has stated that this existed before, we are not aware of that. We were aware that this was established after 2011, when the ADU requirements went into effect. If there had been an existing ADU prior to 2011, there is a provision in the code that allows one to get a certificate of compliance for an ADU. We are not aware that that is the case. We have been in contact with Mr. Kenny since I have been here in 2013. He had indicated that that was a man cave, he never intended for it to be an ADU, stopped it being used as an ADU. He had a, somebody who was renting the house and indicated that it was being sublet, and somebody was using the garage apartment. So our understanding is that this was not established prior to 2011. Had it been, he would have been able to follow the certificate of compliance route, rather than coming through and actually getting, and, an approval to have it in the first place. So, now we're at this point where he's requesting a zone change. We did consider the zone change, and cannot find support for that. If you look at the map that I have up here, this is the property at 230 Yale, and what we're looking at is a pattern of zoning and justification for making zone changes. This is a very large swath, this light yellow, a single-family residential. This is the high school complex. It actually is showing R2. This is a very large swath, all the way through the center of town here, around, especially to the east of 9th Street, that is R2. There are pockets, and I, we shouldn't say pockets, there are individual pieces of property that are zoned differently, but the main pattern of zoning is R1 here and R2 here. This is a much older part of town. This is newer development with somewhat larger lots, as you can see. Those pieces of property that are zoned, R2, and I talked about this in the staff report, and Mr. Harmon also had a question about it. These were, there was a comprehensive rezoning that was done in 2010 that established the R1A zone district, which is small lot zoning, which is basically low-density, small lot residential. A lot of properties were rezoned to R1A. Then there were also some properties that were rezoned where duplexes had been built in the R1 zone district some 30, 60, some odd years ago. And the reason for that, I can only surmise, was to establish, establish what was on the property so that it was in conformance with zoning. So if there was an R1 property and it had a duplex on it, and that was built like prior to zoning, or maybe, I don't know, got through the building permit processing correctly or whatever, many years ago, the R2 zoning was put on the piece of property so that it became conforming. There are a few of those here, down in the south part of, south of this piece of property. So we can say, and that Mr. Kenny's property has not been zoned incorrectly. And we can also say that there isn't a change occurring in this area that would warrant I also had a, an example of something that happened earlier or last year, and that was a zoning that occurred right here, where I've got the pointer. In this particular case, this is an R1 zoned piece of property. The house was dilapidated, built in the 1800s, about to fall down. Someone purchased the property, it met the standards for an R2. It was also adjacent to R2 across the street, and also to the north, and we did support that. This area is much older, it is tending to redevelop, and this was a prime example of a lot where the applicant was able to come in and requested that zoning. That does not occur here. We are not, we do not recommend that this zoning be approved. Mr. Kenny can have an ADU on his property, he just has to comply with the residency requirement. And the residency requirement was put in there on purpose. What, and I know that we've certainly had this discussion before. Back before this happened, while they were discussing how the ADU was going to come about, they, the powers that be at that time, council and planning commission and staff, actually put this provision in on purpose, so that in R1 and RL, there was that safeguard of having a property owner on site at least part of the year. That could conceivably, I mean, a recommendation could be made that that goes away, but it isn't. That is a requirement. R2 doesn't have it, and neither does R3. So, I just want to leave you with that. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to talk to you about that, or, you know, whatever you may need to...
Mr. Trump?
Yes.
Ask. Councilman Gill?
Has this property been occupied since council turned it down?
Yes, it has.
Was there any extension given officially or formally?
There was not, but we requested that they come back in with an application right away, and they pretty much did. It took them a couple of months, but they, it is still occupied.
Okay.
Terry, you had, Terry, you'd indicated that, earlier, just briefly, that he had represented that it was to be built as a man cave. Is that when we, we approved an initial building permit, or?
There was not, there was no building permit.
That's just what the use was going to be, right?
Does this piece of property have a certificate of occupancy?
No, it does not. I mean, well, the house very well may have, but not...
No, I'm talking about the, the prospective ADU.
Right, no, we are not aware that there is a building permit that was pulled on that, on that.
Oh, Commissioner Harmon?
Maybe this is for Councilman Gill, for the most part. What, was there any, during the discussion of this with, with the council, was there any, say, leading the owner that this would be approved if the zoning was, that you recall?
I would think that would not be a question of council, that would be a question of staff. It was a long time ago, and it's just not something that the council would do.
I wouldn't think so, but...
Let me add something to that. That was a suggestion that was made.
Just to give it a shot.
And that is something that the council has yet to decide. But from the planner's perspective, and looking at the zoning code, it would be our recommendation not to approve that. They may feel very differently about that, you may feel differently about that as a group, but staff does not recommend doing this.
So, here's my opinion on this, and you guys, we can discuss this a little further. We talked about the ADU and the occupancy requirement of the owner of the property for six months of the year, and did we decide at a previous, and I don't have my notes, so, did we decide at a previous meeting that, did we discuss why that was a requirement that the property owner have to reside in one of the units for six months?
As I recall from that meeting, Angela Bellantoni was still on the, on the commission at that time.
Right.
And she was instrumental in helping to establish that ADU process. And she said that that was basically done on purpose, for the very reason that I mentioned, about a safeguard in that particular zone district, it being low-density residential, specifically. Now, when you guys made the recommendation back in July, you did recommend approval of this, but acknowledging that the occupancy requirement was not being met. You didn't recommend denial. And I think, and it is a little bit sticky. I do believe that the council and commission wish to let people do what they would like to do with their property. However, we do have very specific rules, and it would seem as if, if we really want this to be allowed, then it would seem to me that we should change the zoning regulation and, and take that stipulation off of R1, rather than to actually rezone a piece of property to circumvent the rule.
Right, and that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at. So, what steps can we take to have that discussion about removing that requirement? Because I understand the reason for the requirement, but I don't think it applies in these times. We're very short on rental housing, and it just would prohibit a lot of investment in our town if that was a requirement. That's just my opinion. Everyone else might have a different opinion.
Yeah, I think I'm a little different on that. I think when you get into single-family neighborhoods, I think there's, there's necessarily a little more protectionism, I guess you could say, for the neighborhoods, especially if it's maybe a newer neighborhood. But it's a, it's a sticky situation, you know, it's, you're absolutely right. I mean, I agree, there's, there's nothing that seems to allow it, in what I've read. But at the same time, you know, the homeowners in Hawaii can't really do anything. Now, when it gets to owner occupied, does that mean the owner himself, or a family member of the owner? We talked about this, I know, about a month ago or two.
Property owner.
The property owner.
Mm-hmm, property owner.
Needs to occupy it.
One of the other things to bring up too, it's the intent of, the intent of the ADU. It used to be that ADUs weren't allowed at all. That's not to say that they didn't exist. I mean, we, we have a lot of them out there that were, over time, just established before zoning occurred, sometimes after the fact. And there are still communities throughout the country that don't allow ADUs at all. So this was a step to allow them in certain portions of the, in certain portions of the city. And it would seem to me that if someone wants to establish an ADU, they should come talk to the city and find out if it's something that they can do and where they can do it, rather than establishing it and then coming in after and asking forgiveness. That still nevertheless happens. Let me just read something to you, and I think I put this in the original staff report. So, "The purpose of ADUs is to provide for the creation of an additional living quarters on lots within a single-family oriented neighborhood, to help residents provide care and support for family members, provide security and companionship for property owners, and address the rising costs of home ownership, while ensuring that such arrangements are both compatible with the character of the neighborhood, whether existing or new, and will not infringe upon the quality of life expected in those neighborhoods." And there is a difference between R1 and R2.
So, would you say the envisionment, when they, when they added that adendum, was basically like a mother-in-law cottage, or like a caretaker's cottage-type thing?
That's exactly right.
I don't feel it was intended for profit or income.
Was it a commercial?
It was for the care of elderly, or the care of a family member.
Which is a big deal in Canyon City.
Well, that's exactly right. I understand the sentiment. However, we also discussed, someone creates an ADU, builds an apartment above the garage, lives in the house, fits all the boxes, checks all the boxes, and moves. Now, he has a property that if he were to move and rent out the main living quarters, he's no longer in compliance with our rules. That's going to happen, it's going to happen.
It is, and it may well already have happened.
And it may already have happened. So how do you mitigate that issue? Do we need to relook at the reasoning behind the six months occupancy requirement?
I think it's a perfectly valid thing to be doing, absolutely. I, it may be something that in, in taking this forward, I can certainly make that recommendation on your behalf to council.
Okay.
Be happy to do that.
Our first motion is to, is the rezoning. So, I don't know if anyone has any other opinions. It seems like the rezoning is not the way to go. So maybe we should just discuss that first, then move on to the other subject?
We could. It might be appropriate to hear from the public as well.
Okay, let's do that. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak to the motion enhance? Yes, step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rudy Rudolph Ichabon, kind of known as RC Ichabon. I live at 1336 Wood Lawn. I built my home in 1964. When I built my home, excuse me, I have a little trouble with my voice. When I built my home, everyone in there built their home, and was living in their home as a single residency. I have had many, seen many of our neighbors change, and they have all assumed that the remaining area would remain single residency. I have always been concerned about the welfare of Canyon City. But having to change this to a R2 with the potential of the land behind this property is a scary thing to me. I cannot see an advantage to the residents there. There is nothing to be gained for us who live there to change this to an R2 and bring in a multi-dwelling, which is possible. In my understanding, I am not an expert at this, but am I correct in saying, once that's an R2 right next to it, can be an R2? I would like an answer to that.
It's possible, I mean, it's, it's fact-specific, but it's, I don't want to say it's not going to happen, so.
This is, this is a large, empty part of land in there. And we do have the school right next to it. We have a lot of children now who are coming into the area. It has gone through a cycle of several, several years. There was many children, then tapered off to no children. Now we're getting new residents in the area, and there are many children there. And there's a lot of the kids play in the streets. I don't think anybody that grew up never played in the street, and this concerns me also on there. But I wished I could have read this, I am unable to read what the map said and all that. So I'm having to do this on feel, and that's my gut feeling right now, is we have just extended the residency up where the St. Scholastica Academy is to improve our rental property. And I cannot, you know, I think this is something to be considered. You are opening a very large area for rental properties, which is excellent, because the people there have a certain amount of land and a buffer there. But we will not, we will be confronted with possibly townhouses which are classed as almost duplexes, because they are duplex with a second story. So, that's my feelings for that. And it's up to your consideration, and thank you for putting up with my voice. I'm sorry about that.
We've heard a lot worse.
It did pretty well.
You did well.
Oh, thank you. I didn't think so.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mel, or Melvin Williamson. I live at 1331 Wood Lawn. It's about a block away from the property in question. And when my wife and I bought that residence, it's been, oh, 30-plus years ago, that neighborhood was considered one of the better neighborhoods in Canyon City. I think it still is one of the better neighborhoods in Canyon City. It's maintained its quality of living, the houses, the property owners have taken a great deal of pride in the, in their, their property, the houses, the structure, you know. What I see happening here is concerning in the fact that we're going to change it from, or possibly change it from, private, single-dwelling residence into a multi-dwelling residence, and possibly, like we just mentioned, open it up even more in the, in the future. And I'm, it's very, very concerning considering what we, what we currently have and what could possibly happen in the future. So I'm, I'm against it. It's unfortunate for the individual who lives in Hawaii and owns the real estate here, but I'm just thinking about the people who live here 365 days a year, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wilson?
Councilman Gill?
Ms. Bernath?
Yes.
Would you consider this spot zoning?
No.
Okay.
No, it is not. The legalities of that, Catherine might want to speak to, but no, I would not consider it. It's adjacent, it's still residential.
It is, it is adjacent to the zoning in which it would be changing to, and staying residential. However, I will say there are some issues, because spot zoning occurs when you relieve a specific property from some type of, I don't want to say hardship, but some type of issue that's particular to that property by making the zoning less restrictive, when there hasn't been a change in the area, or that zoning wasn't in error. So there's some issues. It's really on the cusp of spot zoning, is what I would say, even though there's a zoning adjacent, so.
And that, that zoning that is adjacent is not actually residential use. It's a 29-acre...
You said the school is R2?
Well, yes, it is. But the land use there is not residential, it's, it's a school complex of 29 acres.
Yeah, it's usually done by the zoning, not so much the use, but...
It is. So technically, it is adjacent. That's not the only reason to rezone a piece of property, though, is adjacent.
One more from the audience.
I'm Paul Virtrees, I live at 1340 Wood Lawn. And you can chalk me up as another who really is against a zoning change. We purchased our home in 2012 because of the neighborhood, and because of the, and we talked about the, the rules on the ADU and, and the character of the neighborhood, and I listened to that language, and that's one of the reasons we purchased our home. I have taught at Canyon City High School for 17... I have taught at Canyon City High School for 17 years, and so I was very familiar with this neighborhood. And because of teaching at the high school all those years and watching the traffic flow from Canyon City High School over to 15th Street, and I want to just bring this up briefly, I can tell you that that's a shortcut for a lot of traffic at lunch and before and after school. And increasing the traffic flow with more residents into the same number of addresses is a concern of mine. Woodlawn Avenue is one of those shortcuts for students and staff to get across 15th Street. So is Allison. If you take a look at Dewey, it's got a, kind of a quirky little corner there, but students and staff also go through there. And, you know, the speed limit and the amount of traffic and traffic flow through our neighborhoods, and we talked about, earlier talked about the quality of these neighborhoods with single-residence homes. These blocks weren't even set up for increased traffic flow, I don't think. And I can tell you that the speed that people travel now between stop signs between Allison and 15th Street, and I see this every day, I witness it every day, with traffic going through there, we don't need, and it's unsafe, to have increased traffic through there. And as Dr. Ichabon alluded to, you know, that we're opening a can of worms here in this neighborhood, because if we do this now and we do this for this request, and we do it over and over, I think we need to take a look at the safety between Canyon City High School and 15th Street and where that traffic goes. And so, I would just ask you to consider that. I can tell you that we chose to purchase our property and our home because of the character of the neighborhood, and we don't want to see that changed. And so, I would ask you to consider that and take that into consideration when you're making a decision on this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before I close this public hearing, is there any more comments or questions of staff or any of the applicants?
Terry, just real quick, I just want to kind of get a brief summation. So, basically, we have a building that was not built in compliance. It is not being used in compliance.
Right.
It doesn't have a certificate of occupancy, and is non-owner occupied. Okay. I just want to make sure I've got all the basic facts, because, you know, much like yourself, Terry, I believe that there is a need for rental market in Canyon, but I also think that there's also within reason on certain things on that.
Correct. Okay, anything else? Ms. Bernath, any other comments?
No, none for me.
Okay. So, I'm gonna close this public hearing, and I need a motion and a second based on the findings of fact.
May I, let me interject something here for you. When we prepare the findings of fact and the recommendation, we are doing that based on staff's recommendation. You will see that your motion, number one, on findings of fact, does not support the zone change. If you wish to do the zone change and recommend approval of it, your findings of fact will have to be different than what is shown here. You will have to find findings that are, that support your decision.
Right.
Just to let you know.
So, do I have a motion and a second? I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Harmon. I move that the City of Canyon City, upon conducting the public hearing for a zone change request at 230 Yale Place from R1, low-density residential to R2, medium-density residential, and after consideration, considering the testimony presented by the applicant, city staff and any other interested parties find as follows, that none of the, none of the three conditions exist for approval.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Ledoux.
Okay, I need, I'm sorry, I need to slow down just a bit. I forgot I'm also acting as the secretary.
You forgot already?
I did. I apologize. I'm sorry, who seconded that?
It's Thanksgiving.
Ledoux. Thank you, Mr. Ledoux.
We don't have to follow the rules.
Okay. So.
Second from Commissioner Ledoux, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Please call roll.
Okay. Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. There's a second part of this, motion number two. Can I have a motion and a second, please?
I will make that motion as well.
Commissioner Harmon?
Based on the above findings of fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to counsel the City of Canyon City, denial of the request for rezoning.
I'll second.
The rezoning.
This is the rezoning.
We're getting to that. Commissioner Ledoux, did you second?
Second, yes.
Okay. Ms. Bernath, please call roll.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Denial. Motion passed? Does not pass?
The motion passed for denial.
Denial. Okay, so, part two of this public hearing is with the same property and a whole different discussion. Public hearing, special review use, accessory dwelling unit at 230 Yale Place. Like to open this public hearing, the provisions of the City Municipal Code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we have a staff report, please, Ms. Bernath?
You sure can, as soon as I locate it. Okay, this is a request for special review use. You've heard this again. This is the second time this comes around. I would imagine that based on your recommendation, this could be a very short hearing. Well, perhaps not. So, this application, currently, the property is in R1. The request has been to change the zoning to R2 so that the residency requirement does not have to be met. You have just made a recommendation not to rezone it to R2. So, I'm not sure if we want to go through the entire issue around this. There are conditions that are attached to this if it was to be approved for R2 that would require it, a change in a zone to R2 in order for this to happen and all of the conditions to be met. So, I will leave it at that.
So, just to maybe add to that a little bit, I think Planning Commission has two choices. The first one is to say, based upon your recommendation for denial of the rezone, you take the following action on this application. Or you can say, in addition to that, if council chooses to rezone, we would either recommend denial of this application or recommend approval of this application with or without the conditions put forth by staff. Does that make sense? It's kind of complicated.
It makes sense. Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
But I think there's another part to this, and I mentioned it earlier, is that to revisit the requirement that the owner occupy the property for six months out of the year. I think that's a whole separate discussion. I don't know if that would be something we would have to tackle at a later time, not tonight.
That's true. And that would be a discussion and a decision that would have to come after this decision.
Okay.
I, it could conceivably, maybe perhaps the council might want to put, penned this decision, or I have no idea.
I don't know what they do, but, I mean, Planning Commission can initiate a zoning amendment.
You can.
So, based upon, Terry knows more a little bit about the process before when this has happened, but I think if you want to talk about that after this application, that's fine, and then Terry can make whatever recommendation to council that you decide you want to make, if you want to make one, on the zoning change itself, like the amendment to the code.
Okay, so, based on the application, based on our previous discussion, we, there's no way to approve this application. So, you said we can move on with that recommendation. But I'd like to, I mean, I think it makes sense that this should be an ADU, in my opinion. And why don't we discuss, how do you guys feel about what I'm talking about and discussing the occupancy requirement?
Do you want to maybe see if the applicant wants to add anything or the public to this public hearing, and then you can discuss? Is that all right?
Sure. Ms. Arona, do you have anything to add to the accessory dwelling unit application?
I don't know that I have a lot to add to it, except that I would like to clarify Mr. Kenny's position. This was, when he purchased this, this was already there. And everybody keeps saying Mr. Kenny established it, and he didn't. It was there, it had an address, it was listed by a realtor as being an apartment, 800-foot apartment. He didn't do that. He bought it that way.
It may have been listed that way, but that may have not been in compliance.
Well, I know that one time there was a permit pulled and nothing, I guess filed after that, whatever happens with that. But I don't think he should be getting the onus for having established it. We just used what was there, the highest and best.
Right, so, I think that the proper designation is accessory dwelling unit in this case. So, we seem to have, we have an issue with occupancy of the owner.
I understand that.
So, I think that's where we're at.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
Let me add something else, because there are, there is a date here, 2011, where you can, you can conceivably certify a pre-existing one. We wouldn't be going through this. Mr. Kenny has never brought forth any information around that. I mean, I've been talking to Mr. Kenny in letters and such since 2013 around this particular issue, and he has never indicated that this was in effect prior to us talking to him. So, I mean, if that is the case, then please bring it forth, and we can certainly consider.
What do you want brought forth?
Well, we would have to have evidence that it was pre-existing.
And that it was used.
And that it was used. And there may be something where it has, if it is no longer, if it was decommissioned as, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
They have a bearing on this as well.
Let me take a step back. Even if it was being used, I'm not sure it was being used in conformity with the code at the time.
I agree with that.
So, it would have been, it would have been illegal when it was used. And so, you don't have any, he doesn't have any established rights based upon that previous use. So, that's kind of the issue. I don't know when it was used or when the zone change happened. I'm not sure of that sequence of events, but the issue is, is that he can't rely on that. And I understand maybe representations were made to him. Unfortunately, the city can't control what third parties say to other third parties, so.
Well, there was an address and people getting mail there at some point. May I talk to Mrs. Hill?
That's not necessarily, that does not necessarily establish the legal use of a property.
Oh, I'm not saying whether it was legal or not.
Okay.
I'm just saying I think it was used.
Wasn't this brought up, sorry, wasn't this brought up or discovered because the address could not be utilized or assigned under the current condition?
Right, it was brought to our attention the last time in that the post office let us know that there was an address being used and that was incorrect, and we never assigned that. It's the duty of the city to assign addresses. We never assigned that address and asked them to remove it. Then we knew that Mr. Kenny was using that property again as an apartment when he had originally told us that he had no intentions of doing that anymore or at all, so.
And my other question is, doesn't every AUD, or yeah, ADU, isn't it required to have a certificate of occupancy and building inspections as it's constructed?
If it's a new one, yes. If it's a pre-existing one, an old one, say it was something that was done prior to 2011, it gets something called a certificate of compliance. Where we look at it for basic health and safety issues, and it's based on not certificate of occupancy under the current building code, but we look at it as if it was a substandard building. So, we are looking at just basics.
Does this particular piece of property have a certificate of compliance?
No, no, it does not.
And Ms. Arona, I just, I can't speak for all of the Planning Commission, but for myself, there's no part of this decision that is hanging it on Mr. Kenny's head. It's just without, trying to establish some sort of legality within the property in order to, you know, find a string of ways to look at, ways to make this work.
I understand, and whatever you guys decide, we will comply. And I wasn't meaning that you were making a decision.
No, I understand, I understand. And it is unfortunate for Mr. Kenny if it was represented to, as a possible income property, you know, if there's not been an established legal complying set of paperwork, basically, a trail to make it that. That is unfortunate. I've seen that before, and it's not, it's really non-beneficial to people that are coming to our community and investing in our community.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for letting me.
I think that's one of the reasons that we really need to make sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's, is that people have in the past and still do get the wrong information. And if we start to set a precedent at this point, when there's so many questions and so much that's not accounted for, as in the process of creating this ADU, then I think we'd be mistaken to move forward with it at this point. The fact that it's an ADU or could be used as an ADU is kind of different, aside from the fact that I don't think it's the right time to do it, you know, and I guess that's where I'm looking at it. And it has more, much more to do with legality again, like Mr. Dorito said. It's, I know the neighborhood really, really well, because I live very near it, and I go by it all the time. And I see that house, and I actually walked around that house once when I moved here, and I totally get it, I totally get, you know, totally get the possible use for it, and I totally get the fact that I could probably move out of my house and rent it out to somebody, but he can't because of the ADU requirements. And that's all stuff that has to be resolved in a different form, unfortunately.
Thanks, Ms. Arona.
Thank you.
So, we're kind of forced into a decision, I guess, on this one, because we're not in compliance. So, we, let's just have a vote, and then discussion after.
Okay. Would you like to close the public hearing?
Is there any other comments from the audience? Any other questions of staff or applicant? Okay, then I will close the public hearing. All right, let me get to the correct section here.
There is a findings of fact advisory report for the special review use. Again, two motions, one findings of fact, and the second is your actual motion of a I don't, I'm not sure where you're gonna be coming from on that. And if you do decide to make a recommendation that has conditions with it, I would like to add a condition. Well, let's see where you go with the findings of fact first.
Okay, call for a motion and a second based on the findings of fact.
So, are we, okay, we, I'm gonna make the motion, the Canyon City Planning Commission, following consideration of the above captioned special review use request, and after considering the testimony presented by the applicant. the testimony presented by the applicant, city staff, and other interested parties finds as follows, the application does not comply with the requirements. And then, I'm sorry, you had told us there were some other things as per our denial of our...
Yeah, I, what I was trying to say was, you could preface your recommendation based upon your previous decision. So based upon your previous denial of the rezoning application, this application doesn't meet the requirements of 1724.
Okay, so may I, I'd like to amend that, that based upon our previous recommend, or our previous denial, the zone change to R2, that we deny the request for accessory dwelling unit.
I think you can just read number one and say it does not, the application does not...
You could also do, I had put this in here under number four, the use does not meet the residency requirement for R1 district.
Okay, amendment again.
Does that work, Catherine?
Yeah, that's fine.
Amended again.
I'm sorry.
The commission finds as follows, the residency requirement, it does not meet the residency requirement for the proposed R2 district.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Harmon.
Oh my gosh, you did it again. I'm sorry. Hang on just a second. Commissioner Dorito, who seconded?
Commissioner Harmon.
Harmon, thank you. Okay, are you ready?
I think so. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Bernath, call roll, please.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. So I, maybe we discuss this after Thanksgiving about bringing that up as far as that occupancy requirement and maybe involving city council, bringing it to city council, just kind of discuss that issue, because that could change a lot of these circumstances that we're dealing with right now. Of course, they'd have to be, have a certificate of compliance or certificate of occupancy in every case, but I think this is a question we need to discuss, maybe at a work, work session.
Okay. I will pass that on for sure.
Perhaps bring it to a vision committee on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We actually have a second motion to make.
Oh, right.
On the recommendation.
Call for a motion and a second based on the recommendation.
Make the motion again, therefore, based on the findings of facts, and after having considered the development features of the proposed use, Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation at city council, denial of the special review use request.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Harmon seconds. Ms. Bernath, call roll, please.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. We have another public hearing. Thank you for coming. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I'd like to open the public hearing, zone change from R1 and R1 P U D to O P R for city-owned drainage facilities vicinity of Ninth Street and Washington Street. The provisions of the city municipal code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and comprehensive plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we please have a staff report?
Yes, sir. And members of the commission, this is zone change for city-owned property, two parcels that form the shape of an L. They're in the north part of the city, and they surround on the west and south side a private parcel where, I'm not sure if, are you all familiar with this piece of property? Okay. Some years ago, the city purchased drainage facilities along this piece of property because it has some serious groundwater issues. The southern portion is called the Kelly Strip, and I don't think that the western portion is, has a name. But just recently, this property was also purchased by a private individual, not, not the, the two strips that are city-owned, but the other, the majority of the parcel. If you look at your map that's in your packet, the O P R, or the large green space plus the commercial space that is in the, more in the right-hand corner of that parcel, this 47 acres was purchased by an individual. They have rezoned a portion of the property that they planned to use, and the rest of the property has been zoned to open space, because it basically is, it would be very difficult to develop. Their plan, although that has not been accomplished yet, their plan is to donate that O P R piece, which is about 45 acres, to the city. This will always be used for open space, because again, it has some serious groundwater issues. Because the zoning on the, this large piece of property was R1 with a P U D on it, which is the blue hatched mark that you see there, it became, that zoning became very incongruous with the surrounding property, which is that this will always be a drainage facility, it will always be open space. We wanted to make sure that it was, it was the same as the open space parcel. And so this is basically a correction to make sure that the use matches with the, with the zoning. So it's very, you know, this is pretty simple. This, these parcels are not buildable, I mean, they're only 50 feet wide, and they are used as drainage facilities.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
This is a Ms. Sellers.
Yes.
Does this designation as O P R parks and all this, does this conflict with the city charter?
No. And the reason why is because the city has no plans to actually use it or invest funds for the parks, open space, recreation, the language in the charter. And just so, I don't know if the rest of planning commission is aware of what you're referring to, but with, when the city takes donated property or purchases property for parks, recreation, I believe open space is actually not listed, any kind of thing along those lines, it has to go to a vote of the citizens.
And that's because of the city charter?
And the, and the city charter requires that. So when the city planned to take this property, it was discussed, and, and it will be represented in the donation agreement, that it is not going to be used for those uses. It's going to be used for drainage facilities and just general open space, but no investment of funds or improvements to the property for recreation or park.
Just, this is a little bit off the subject, but on the subject, is there any way to designate an O P R zone so that we don't run into this possible conflict with the charter? Is that something that would be prudent or something that would be not ever necessary?
You would really need, I think, and Terry can disagree with me, but I think you'd need a separate zoning designation that would not allow for parks and recreation, but would allow for open space and other...
And open spaces, open space with no, with, yeah, with no usable...
Yeah, and you, you only have this...
No usable purpose.
Yeah, you have this designation, which is a little bit broader. So you'd have to, you'd have to create a new designation.
Because my, my concern honestly is the fact that it does have O P R, and it does have parks and rec in it. So we zone it at that. I don't know how to make sure that it will never, ever be used as a park or a recreation area yet, you know, in the future of the property, without going to a vote by the citizens of Canyon City. My concern.
And, and it's a valid one, I think. There needs to be some type, at least temporarily, if you don't do the different zoning designation or create the new zoning district, there needs to be some type of internal mechanism that would trigger notification that that property cannot be used for these purposes until a vote of the people.
Ever and ever and ever, unless it's voted on by the, by the public.
Yep.
And Catherine is correct, that we could conceivably establish, and that might be another suggestion that goes forward to council.
Could that be a requirement, a stipulation in this zoning change, that it never be used for parks and recreation unless it's voted by, you know, according to city charter?
Oh, yes.
Could that be a condition in this?
Well, it can be. It, you would want, are you suggesting that it be used on these two strips of property?
On, on whatever is being rezoned at this moment.
It could be, yes.
That would, that, I think that would, would help a lot personally, and I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a planner, but if that...
We're discussing the two strips right now, right?
Right, we are. We're not discussing the large piece.
We're not discussing the 40 acres.
Right, we're only discussing these two strips of property that are on the map as owner of Canyon City. But I do understand...
I don't care if it's four feet by four feet, or if it's 900 acres by 900 acres. It's just my concern.
Okay. We can certainly, when someone makes a motion, we can add that condition, just help me through how you want that worded.
Well, Catherine and I can work on that. I, but yeah, I...
Yeah, or is that a different item altogether? I mean, is that just completely out of this, out of the realm of this discussion?
I don't want to speak for Councilmember Gil, but I think he's saying, even though this property isn't the larger parcel, you still are saying you have a concern...
It's attached to that parcel, and it's not, it, if...
So regardless of whether it was donated or not, it's a city property. If it's, if it's O P R, you're concerned that it...
But O P R and parks and rec are under the same zoning.
I see where you're going.
And by our city charter, we cannot have a piece of property that's designated as a park or recreation without the general public voting on it.
So, but I think the difference, right now, the city already owns these, these aren't the donated pieces that we're talking about tonight.
I'm going to...
Okay. So when we're, when we're talking about the big green section, that, which hasn't happened, could potentially be donated to the city...
But still, even this piece of property, whether it's four feet by four feet...
Anything designated O P R.
If, if, if the city wants to designate it as a parks and rec, it has to go to the public for vote. Am I correct or no?
It cannot acquire property.
Right.
And then create a park. So if it's owned it, I don't know how long it's owned these pieces of property.
Long time.
Long time. It may have owned it before the charter was passed, and then that wouldn't apply to that property.
No, it, it hasn't been long. Own that long.
So I think for tonight, it's pretty cut and dry. I think in the future, we're going to be discussing the rest of it.
That's correct. And there is a development agreement attached to this larger parcel of open space that specifically designates its use. So that will be considered by council in the future, in the near future.
But you've got a bigger picture, though. You're looking at a bigger picture of O P R and not in designating sections of it.
I think it actually, given, given the stipulation that's in the charter, which is a little bit unusual, but given what that is, it probably makes sense to create another zone district and go through and do a, a comprehensive rezoning of those pieces of property where that is a stipulation.
Like a utility district or something like that.
Right, something that, stormwater utilities.
Because I, I think that we're going to probably use a lot of property. As the stormwater issue moves on, we're going to acquire property or have property that is for stormwater drainage. So I think that the creation of that probably would alleviate a lot of concerns and a lot of problems in the future.
And this is a little off topic for planning commission, but the other alternative is to put a question to the voters to remove that provision from your charter.
I, I think that's, there's some things that have been discussed about the charter, yes. Some things that just absolutely worked in 1920 that don't necessarily fit the lifestyles and the ways of today.
Right.
Yeah, and I think it's geared towards more donations of golf courses and different things like that, that would actually affect the city budget, you know, in general. But that's a whole different discussion than what we're talking about.
But the rules are the rules, and they can only be enforced as written.
And you know, it could be that this is an interim step, just is an added protection or something that council might feel is appropriate before that question goes to the, to changes charter. I, I think we can craft something around that, if you just want to make sure that that's in your motion for amendment.
We want to add, we want to add a blurb condition pertaining to what we just discussed. Okay. Is everyone clear? All right. Are there any other, are there any comments from the audience?
Well, I think I've lost.
Can you come up?
Do you want, come on up, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Jim Penny, 506 Washington. I think I just figured out, you're only talking about that blue hash mark that runs behind everybody's house.
Right.
Okay. I don't, I don't understand what you mean by drainage facility.
For, for stormwater runoff.
So it's like a ditch.
Just down that strip?
Yes.
Not through, not through the big property, just down that strip?
Currently, at this point, the city acquired this blue hatched strip and this yellow strip along here for stormwater purposes. And I do believe that the Kelly Strip contains a ditch at this point. This may be also, that may function as a ditch as well. I'm not absolutely sure.
Okay, then there, in order to make a drainage, you would have to put either a ditch or an underground pipe through there. That's what I want, because my, my house backs up against that. So I just want, I thought we was going to discuss what you're going to do with the big property.
No.
So that's where I'm lost. Okay.
Okay. No, not at this point. No, we're only talking about the, those two strips of property.
Thank you for being here, for your input.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments of staff? Okay, hearing none. I'll close this public hearing. And we need, we have two motions. So initially, I need a motion and a second based on the findings of fact. I'm calling for a motion and a second.
At least you thought you were.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Dorito.
The Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing on the zone change request for the city-owned meets and bounds parcels in the southeast quarter of Section 20, Township 18, South Range 70, west of the 6th PM, and after considering the testimony presented by city staff and other interested parties, finds as follows, the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for community-related use, which was not anticipated at the time of adoption. The city's comprehensive plan and the statutory zoning will be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Is that sufficient, or do we think number one also applies?
One of the three should apply.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with what Mr. Dorito's saying.
Are you saying you're seconding that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, second, Commissioner Harmon. Ms. Bernath, call roll, please.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ledoux? The motion passed.
Okay, motion passes, part two, based on the findings of fact. I need a motion and a second, please.
Based upon the findings of fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendations to the city council of the city of Canyon City, approval of the request for rezoning.
Second that.
May I interject?
Discussion, please, maybe.
I'm sorry. There was a, I believe, a request to have a condition in there that said that it wouldn't be used for any other, just purposes.
Oh.
Without a vote, without a...
Just to make that easy, I would just say it should be used in compliance with the charter of the city of Canyon City.
And the charter would support only that, so yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, amend my, I'd like to amend my motion to approval of the request for rezoning, but only under the following conditions, adherence to the charter of the city of Canyon City, as it rules and stipulations.
Okay.
Second, please. Do you still second?
I will second that.
Second, Commissioner Harmon. Ms. Bernath, call roll, please.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Recommendation passed. Recommendation passed.
All right. Okay, are there any announcements from the commissioners or staff or council members?
Pie's in the oven, brother. Somebody else's oven, but it's got to be in an oven, I'll bet you.
Okay, well, I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.